Let's call it to order, City Clerk.
This is the roll call for the City Council on Authority. Councilmember Christ.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Ma'am.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
And we don't have a chair for the Housing Authority. Who takes this?
I do.
Vice Mayor.
Call it order of the Housing Authority. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
This is for the Housing Authority. Housing Director Chris.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Ma'am.
Present.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Chair Zado. We have a quorum.
I'll entertain a motion to excuse Chairman Zado.
So moved.
You're second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? It passes.
Great. Thank you. Can I have the meeting back?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, the invitation tonight is Pastor Odoo. How do you?
Sule Odoo.
Thank you from the Redeemed Christian Church.
Let's rise up. Before I pray, I want to kind of read a shorter passage of the Bible to us. In First Timothy, chapter two, from verse one to three, it says, "I exalt therefore that first of all supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and for all that are in authority, that women lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty; for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God as Savior. Father, we thank you tonight for the privilege that you have given us as men and women and people in the city of Lancaster. We know we can't do anything without you, and we trust your power and presence in this place for our city leaders, for all our men and women that you have placed in position of authority to lead us. And we pray today, even as we meet and deliberate over the affairs of this city, I pray God that you be with us, and you help our leaders to lead us the right. And in their deliberation today, help them to do what is right and what is good. In honor of your name, in Jesus' name we pray. And everybody say amen."
Amen.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have Barbara Boswell with a presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and Authority members. It's my pleasure to present to you an award that the city received from the Government Finance Officers Association of U.S. and Canada. It's the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and it is the 26th consecutive year we've actually received this award. The award is a national award recognizing conformance with the highest standards for preparation of state and local government financial reports. The financial report must be prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and include a report from an independent auditor. And receiving this award is only possible with the assistance and cooperation of the City Council, the City Management and staff. And particularly, I'd like to recognize Pam Statsman, Nicole Rizzo, and Tammy Holliday of the finance staff for their efforts that have directly resulted in the receipt of this award. So, we will display it proudly.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Mario, come on down. Is that your mother with you? You know, I have four kids. I know who really did this. Bring her down here. Hi, how are you? Congratulations. Mario is a student at SOAR. SOAR, as everybody should know, is the jewel of the Antelope Valley. To even be in that school is an accomplishment. It is the top 1% in the nation of all high schools, and it's right here in Lancaster. And for whatever reason, it's the best-kept secret out there. I mean, seriously, the top 1%. Every student that goes there who graduates goes to college. There are, what, 20 schools in the nation that can say that? That is just absolutely remarkable what they've accomplished there. And it's an interesting eclectic group of students. It's one-third black, one-third brown, and one-third white. Most of the students that go there, their parents did not graduate from college, and far too many are single parents. And so, to just get there is huge. But then to be selected as the Student of the Month from SOAR, that's an accomplishment. Mario was the -- you gotta tell me, what's the activist camp?
Oh, it's a program that I went to over the summer and it kind of taught me about -- it's a summer program I went to that kind of taught me about different types of oppression. And it taught me a lot about myself and about my community and people around me.
It sounds suspiciously liberal, but that's okay. He attended Models of Pride '19, Leadership Summit 2011 and 2012. He was on the Queer Youth Advocacy Day, the GSA Activist and Leadership Academy. He participated in the Gay-Straight Alliance Network, the OUT Project Education Director, and Project Hughes Founder and Board Member. There's one thing you have is courage. That's incredible courage to, at your age. He has over $100 hours of community service, has volunteered at the Museum of Art and History and the Western Hotel Museum. He's participated in the Martin Luther King Day of Service, the Mural of Equality, the Unity Path at Eldorado Park for two years, and has volunteered at the AV Fair Everyone's Family Day 2011 and 2012. So, on behalf of the City of Lancaster... Then, we give a $1,000 scholarship. Now, you know, when we give a $1,000 scholarship to the SOAR Students of the Month, we know that's $1,000 because they all go to college. Not everybody does that. We give the scholarship, too. Congratulations. Thank you. Do you know where you're gonna go? Not yet. Okay, great. We have Cameron French. Is he here? Come on down. Well, who did you bring with you? Bring your mom down. Your mom doesn't want to come down. Did you tell her she has to give a speech? Come on down.
Yay for moms.
Cameron is a senior. You can play. Cameron is a senior at Antelope Valley High School, has passed for 867 yards through the first seven games this season. He's a quarterback, has rushed 903 yards through the first seven games this season, has 22 touchdowns so far this season, passing for 13 and rushing for nine. He was named 2011 Team Most Valuable Player. I can understand that. He is named 2011 Team, First Team All-Golden League. Cameron is a member of the varsity basketball team and the varsity track team. He is qualified for the Golden League Finals in the 100 and 200-meter dash. He has received letters of interest from San Diego State, University of Idaho, University of Ohio, and University of Nebraska. He is the -- for his outstanding accomplishments, we'd like to present Cameron with the Mayor's Athlete of the Month Award. And you also get a $1,000 scholarship. How often do you get a picture with the mayor? Great job. Thank you.
And let's say that he's a graduate from Antelope Valley High School. Lopes.
I'm sorry, what?
Go Lopes.
Go Lopes.
I went to Palmdale for a very short time, but nonetheless. So did Marvin. Marvin actually graduated. Go figure.
He was the first for this council.
It actually was, wasn't it? All right, we're gonna move item number CA1. Okay, tell me how you want me to do this. I mean, you can't give me cryptic notes and expect...
We're gonna do it right after New Business.
Okay, we're gonna do New Business one first, then. Okay. We can, thank you. So I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any speaker? We don't have any speaker cards, I think, on any of the Housing Authority stuff. So, any discussion or do I hear any motions on the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Call for a vote. Passes unanimously. Do I hear any discussion or any motions on Consent Item One, which is the only consent calendar? Motion to approve CC1.
I'll second that.
Call for a vote. It's approved. I turn the meeting back over to the mayor. Thank you. Let's go through the consent calendar. Any cards?
There's no speaker cards on the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Anything to be removed?
No.
Is there a motion?
We need to do the minutes.
We'll get to the minutes. I wanna do the consent calendar.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar as currently comprised.
Second. Let's vote. Unanimous now, do we have a motion for the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Let's vote. Unanimous, okay. So, we're gonna do New Business Item One first.
Yes, and then CA1.
And Rhonda Perez will...
Patty Garibay will be doing the presentation tonight.
Did Patty know that?
I apologize, I'm kind of winging it tonight, but basically what we're doing tonight is we're having the council nominate and appoint this year's Lancaster Youth Commission. And these students were basically selected from all the local high schools here in town. These are definitely the best and brightest students that you can find here in Lancaster. Each of them went through a selection process, they went through an interview, and they all have a genuine interest in government. And they're very excited to do wonderful things here for the city, and they are representatives of our Lancaster youth. And so, with that, I will call them up, and then we will do... Yeah, see, that's what I'm...
I'll move to approve NB1.
I second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous? Okay.
No, you can call them. Should I call them up now? Okay, great. Zimu Wang from Antelope Valley Christian. Oh, Zimu Wang, sorry. Sorry about that. Antelope Valley Christian. Rachel Wykoff from Antelope Valley High School. In Week 11 class. Josh Kay from Desert Christian. Anna Tierney from Lancaster Baptist High School. Harley Paulman from Gerkle High School. Amy Elder from Portle High School. And last but not least, Alex Conrato from SOAR High School. Hey, congratulations. Raise your right hand, and I will read it, and then you can just say... Do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter. So say I do. Thank you. Actually, if you wanna open up your... Take the bibic off.
I love young energy.
Okay, I wanna do something different with you guys this year. I'm talking to you guys. Normally, what you do is you come up here, we give you an award, and I never see you again. I wanna have you guys come up with something that is community-changing, that's doable, that is creative, innovative, that will improve the city. You come up with it, and I'll make it happen. I mean, how often do you get an offer like that, right? But I do wanna hear back from you. So what, 90 days? Okay? All right. I look forward to seeing you. Thanks. Congratulations. Okay, now, what do you want me to do?
CA1, which is the signage.
Oh, the signage one. Okay.
Oh, Joey.
Where's Darlene? Darlene, you got me into this. You gotta come down and tell me what I'm doing here.
She didn't hear you.
Darlene, you're up. This is your bill.
When I stood before this council on Tuesday, October 19th, you, Mr. Mayor, said that several people voted on the codes, rules, and regulation, and there was nothing inappropriate about that. Hopefully, I never inferred that it was inappropriate. Had I read the signage rules before they were voted on, as I now have done, it wouldn't have made a difference. The rules are not the problem. The enforcement, or I should say, the non-enforcement of them is. I direct your attention to the pages I hold in my hand, which obtain on October 17th from the Lancaster Planning Department. It reads in part, under the heading, "Commercial Signs." The planning director has the authority to issue a sign permit in downtown Lancaster if the sign is designed to comply with the applicable design regulations in this section. To allow for creative signing solutions, the planning commission may issue a permit for a sign that is not specifically permitted or prohibited by the regulating code. See page 12 of the City Outlook, September 12, 2012, issue which says that an A-frame sign is not allowed. In Section 5, Page 80, under Examples of Prohibited Signs, there's a picture which includes an A-frame in it. In Section 5, Page 73, the following types of signs are allowed in downtown Lancaster: dining room marquee signs, storefront, primary tenant, window, projecting, directory sign, and monument signs. Please note that the A-frame signs are not on the allowed list. The city's attention has been called to at least two A-frame signs and a banner on the boulevard, many times, but the signs and banner are still there, day after day, on a regular basis. In print, and in the city's own words, not mine, the A-frames and banners are not allowed. I did not make the rules or vote on them. However, it is reasonable for citizens to expect that the rules be enforced, and enforced equally across the board. Anything less, in my opinion, I'm sorry to say, is not good governing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to lend my support to having signs down on the boulevard. And the reason? I am a business owner. Not only am I a business owner, I am also a member of the Boulevard Association. While my esteemed speaker before me was talking about things, I think she was addressing municipal codes that do not apply to the city, of our downtown-specific plan. Doing an informal survey today, as I'm also a block captain, of the 90-some odd businesses that are retail and restaurant, 30 that I was able to visit today are in favor of signs. Why? Because it creates a wonderful atmosphere, and it promotes financial growth. Signs, whether they are A-frames, or they're neon, whether they're marquee, whether they're a banner, they engage the customer. And once the customer is engaged, they come into the store, and they want to know and see what you have. I experience this daily, because I have a sign outside that is portable, temporary, that I move in and out. And it denotes daily what I sell, or what I'm promoting. And in come the businesspeople, or, excuse me, the customers, asking, "Tell me about your villain tea." I forgot to mention, I'm the owner of Molly Kate's Gifts and Tea Room. So, I am in favor of having signs. The enforcement issue, I cannot talk to. I think that we have a wonderful opportunity in our downtown to keep the businesses going, and doing that through signs, I'm all for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I own MBM Architects. I'm a part-owner of Kinetic Brewing Company. Those at the bar tonight watching the game, overall in favor of the signs. Couple things to think about. One, our ordinance doesn't specifically allow or prohibit those sidewalk signs. That's probably why we're here today. It's a little vague on the approach to those. The signs engage people at a person level. That's the whole idea of the boulevard. The rest of the city, we deal with tall signs and over-the-top of buildings, and we drive up, and we park, and we get out. The boulevard, we're engaged. We walk. We see people's faces. Those signs are also at the same level. It's essential to business. Walk up to a business and see a menu and go, "Oh, we're in," or "Today's special." Those sort of things engage people. They add accent to the boulevard. Just a few challenges with those signs. I think we need to be sure that we have a clear sidewalk, pretty obvious thing to do, so there's a path of travel, so it's easy for people to walk by. They don't be a safety issue. I mean, we don't want something that would fall over on somebody, but most A-frames would not. And not distasteful in content, so it would be all promotional type of a thing. I'm not sure we really need to regulate them, other than make sure the content is appropriate. You know, other than that, I'm definitely in favor of them, and most other people are as well. So, thank you.
Don't they get in the way of the skateboarders? Or, no, never mind.
You're working on that. You're doing okay.
Jill Cooper.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Jill Cooper. I'm the president of the Boulevard Association, so I am also in favor of the signs. And I think the issue is probably that they're neither approved or prohibited at this time. I think one of the things that we need to remember is, it does, in this economic time, help our merchants, because it's very cost-effective for them. I agree that maybe there should be something in place determining size, that we wanna make sure they are brought in at night, and that there is a clearance for people to walk by. Other than that, I think that they are something that adds to the charm of downtown, and I would like to see them continue. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a problem?
In my opinion?
Yes.
No, not at all. I agree with the speakers. I think they add charm. I think...
No, 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 I know. I like them, too. I mean, what, I'm gonna say something about signs? Please.
Maybe I misunderstood your question. I thought Darlene raised an interesting point. I mean, does the ordinance include them or not? And if not, let's fix it. It does not prohibit them. Brian, can you address that?
The specific plan prohibits only one type of sidewalk sign, and that is permanent sidewalk signs. It allows temporary signs under the same provisions as the rest of the city. However, I thought Mr. McLernan made a very good point. If you have a sign that is no more than six feet tall, no more than 16 square feet per side, you can place it for up to 90 days without a permit. That is the current ordinance. It does not specify whether it's A-frame. I think there's one that's kind of got a base that I've seen that stands up like that, but it doesn't specify the type. It merely specifies size and size of the sign face and height restrictions. And from my travels up and down the boulevard, I don't think there's any that exceed that that I've seen. I think the one issue that she did bring up was the banner, and that may be something that we'd wanna take a closer look at. But as far as the A-frame-type signage, there's nothing that specifically prohibits them now downtown. It simply regulates height and size.
You mean, I could put some A-frames downtown?
Not off-site, no.
So it has to be on-site?
The businesses.
No, I'm serious. Does it have to be on-site? If not, we should fix that.
Yeah, I agree with you. That's a point. I mean, I think there, it was left without a lot of specifics for this very reason. When you go into pedestrian-oriented areas such as downtowns, not just ours, but others, you tend to find these types of signage that occur. And then there are other things that we've heard about. Whether they're signs or not are kind of a matter of opinion, I think. If someone places some of their merchandise to show it to you, or a restaurant has food samples, is that a sign? That's a hard question to kind of answer in some cases.
I just wanna be certain that we don't find ourselves in a situation that somebody starts taking advantage of this, and we can't enforce it. I do think that if it's within a certain number of feet of the person's business, it's appropriate. As I say, you all agree? Does that hold true for the entire city?
The temporary sign provisions are through the whole city, but one thing... The temporary sign provisions are through the whole city, but one thing that we have been fairly strict about citywide is the banner issue. And that's because a lot of people tend to place them out in landscape areas and things of that type, they're not that attractive. We've looked at times at maybe trying to write some regulations for banners on buildings to try to get a little more uniformity, but at this point, we haven't done anything with them.
I think one of Ms. Peterson's points was that, are we doing it for the people on the boulevard and not for other people? Because the people that did speak, they said it's essential for the business in these economic times, and if we're doing it for the people downtown, why aren't we doing it for everybody?
The temporary sign restrictions apply citywide, they're the same downtown or not. I think, though, that downtown businesses, because of the uniqueness of the environment, are probably better able to take advantage of it than maybe some others have been. And the sign regulations in the city, just as a matter of course, vary from place to place. Many of the shopping centers in the city have their own adopted sign criteria that in some cases are more restrictive than the city's code, and in some cases are more lenient. And it really is just kind of depends on the context. I do think, however, given the unique design features of downtown, you probably have to craft the signage codes a little more carefully in that area. And they do, by the way, have restrictions on them as far as size and other things that don't apply in other areas of the city. So while it may look like they get a break on temporary signage, at the same time, they're restricted from other kinds of signage that people in a normal shopping center could have.
And a lot more design standards in the downtown.
That's correct also.
Anything else? All right, it's not a priority, but clean it up. Fair enough? Good, thank you. But, I mean, you know, there's other more pressing things, but when we get time?
Absolutely, we'll put it on the list, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we go back to public hearing item number one. Hear from the staff report.
Mayor Paris, members of the council. This item is an appeal of the Planning Commission approval of conditional use permit 1107. That project allows for a 10-megawatt PV solar generating facility, and the site is-- it's actually the yellow one that's at the bottom of the screen, it's at the southeast corner of 110th Street West and Avenue J, 40-acre site, 10-megawatt plant. As part of this approval, the Planning Commission also approved a mitigated negative declaration for this project. At the public hearing in front of the Planning Commission, there was testimony given both in favor and in opposition to this project. At times, and you may also hear this, people that were opposed to this project spoke not so much directly to this site as they did to just their overall concerns about solar projects on the west side of the city. The appeal for this case was filed on October 1st. The basis for the appeal that was stated on the appeal form was that the mitigated negative declaration was not adequate, because it does not sufficiently address habitat and special status species, and that there was not an adequate cumulative analysis as part of the environmental document. In preparing the initial study for this project, staff relied on technical studies that were prepared by recognized qualified consulting firms. This included a Phase 1 hazardous assessment by Tetra Tech, a cultural resource survey by Bonterra Consulting, and a biological resources survey prepared by the Chambers Group. There are people present, by the way, who can speak to these reports, should the council have any specific questions about that. In doing these reports, each of these firms physically surveyed this project site, as well as conducted an appropriate literature and database search to prepare their reports. As a result of those reports, it was determined that there were no significant hazardous materials or cultural resources on this property. With respect to biological resources, the survey did not observe any sensitive species, in particular desert tortoise or Mojave ground squirrel, which would not be expected to occur on the site due to a lack of suitable habitat. However, they did note that habitat is suitable for burrowing owl and coast-horned lizard, though neither were observed at the time of the surveys. As a result of that, the mitigation measures adopted as part of the approval do require pre-construction surveys to ensure that any of these species, should they locate on the site between now and construction, would not be adversely impacted. If they are found, the applicants would have to follow the protocols for these species as established by the California Department of Fish and Game. With respect to cumulative impacts, which is another one of the issues, solar projects are somewhat unique in terms of the analysis of cumulative impacts. Unlike a typical development project that creates houses, commercial or industrial uses, they don't generate permanent ongoing impacts to things like traffic, air quality, or noise. Therefore, cumulative impacts are generally considered for these types of projects with respect to the loss of biological resources or effects that are created during construction. As far as the biological survey was concerned, as we indicated, it did not show this as being a significant site. As far as other cumulative impacts that would happen during construction, for those to be considered significant in concert with other projects, you would have to make the assumption that all of that construction happens at the same time. And we do not expect that that is the case with our solar projects, just given the process that they have to go through in terms of getting their approvals, their interconnect agreements, and their power purchase agreements. Construction impacts, obviously, are temporary in nature. The appellant's, as part of their submittal, did not submit any site-specific information which disputes the findings of the technical studies. Further, some of the information that they cited attempts to use impacts that have occurred from other projects of a greater size or scale. For example, the 2,100-acre AV Solar Ranch 1 project in the vicinity of 170th Street West and Avenue D. In contrast, we've noted that the 200-acre Recurrent project, which is currently under construction in the city, has not created those same types of impacts. So we feel that attempting to use impacts that were created by a large-scale project further to the west, and then using them as part of the analysis for this site, is not appropriate. The appellant's also cited concerns regarding aesthetics. The project would be enclosed with a chain-link fence, similar to other fencing associated with residential projects or uses in the area, as well as perimeter landscaping. Also, if you look at this site, and, I don't know, Alan, can you go down to the ground level there? Actually, yeah, and northward, actually along J, if you can look at it. This is the project site, as you can see. Thanks to people who are much better at technology than I am, we can show you this. But if you go up to Avenue J-- Kind of wanted to show you the site, along with what already exists across the street from it. And it's very similar in nature to the size of fencing and other types of impacts that we would expect. Can you go down to where the-- The project site is to your right here, there's existing residential uses to the left, and if we can kind of pan over, this is what we would expect would be consistent with size, scale, and so forth. Therefore, from our standpoint, it doesn't appear that any kind of the development, because we're talking about solar panels that are on the average of about eight feet in height, chain-link fence of the same height, and landscaping, it would certainly change the appearance of the site itself, but long-range views of the mountains and other things that are beyond that would not be affected. Also to be noted is that in this area, you have already existing power lines, quite a number of them, as well as a fairly major substation that's a little ways to the east. We feel that the area is suitable for solar, both due to its environmental characteristics, the gentle slope, the lack of trees on the site, and its proximity to those transmission facilities, which of course is a major issue for solar developers. We believe that this project is consistent with the city's efforts on to promote alternative energy, as well as the state's long-term goals for renewable energy generation for the future. Staff is therefore recommending that the council deny the appeal based on the fact that substantial evidence has not been submitted disputing the technical findings in the initial study, and that you uphold the Planning Commission's decision approving conditional use permit 1107. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? I have one. Thought you got off the hook, didn't you? Are we running the power lines with poles, or are we gonna put them underground?
I believe they are above ground.
How come?
That's generally the way that we've interconnected in that area.
Because we've always done it that way, or what?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, before we do the speaker cards on that, I see that Sue Dell is here, and you have an announcement about Anti-Bullying Month. So I'm gonna take you-- This agenda is just a mess today.
Good evening, council, Mayor Paris. On behalf of the City of Lancaster's Human Relations Tapestry Commission, I'm asking that the city council and mayor name November Anti-Bullying Month. We have a number of activities coming up on the calendar. Each of the school districts in the City of Lancaster have proposed programs for Anti-Bullying Month. I don't know if you want me to read all of them into the record, but we're really pleased with how the administration is stepping in and making it clear to the staff, students, and administrators that there are a number of skills that we need to be promulgating among our youth to have a generation coming up after us that is without gang activity, without domestic violence, without intolerance, without hate crimes. And we're just getting so much support from the superintendents, and we appreciate the support of the council and the mayor. In particular, on November 10th, the California Teachers Association is spearheading a training for parents, teachers, administrators, and interested members of the community on Anti-Bullying 101, followed by a panel of activities. And each of the school districts who send a number of students, staff, teachers, are also qualified to get other benefits, such as a $50 scholarship for the most students coming from one school district, $100 to the first school district to start a new Gay-Straight Alliance group, and so on. So, we're really excited about it. The Tapestry Commission, this is now our fourth program that we're kicking into gear, and we really appreciate your support.
Thank you. Does this require anything from me, or can we--
We're gonna get several of these items on your and the council calendars, and to make appearances at those and to help would be great.
It doesn't require a motion, though?
I'm sorry, misunderstood your question. No, it does not. This is information, and we will have something on your November agenda proclamation.
Okay, thank you. Good. Okay. Well, I'm totally disrupting the agenda. I also want to announce that Mr. Smith will be leaving us soon to go off to the assembly, we assume. Now, if you mess that up, I mean, seriously, Ron, you probably shouldn't come back anyway. But assuming that Mr. Smith goes off to Sacramento, I will be nominating Cassandra Harvey for-- to take his seat. The councilman, Krist, will be moving up to vice mayor, and assuming the council supports the motion, Cassandra will then become the next city councilperson. Now, we can get back to why the majority of the people are here. If we're gonna have Garrett Bean, he's the proponent of the project.
What was the name again?
Garrett Bean. Although the guy following him, I can't read his last name.
Good evening, mayor and fellow councilmembers. Maybe what would be best is if our CEO, John Chaney, said a couple words first, he's also a speaker tonight. But I think you'd like to--
How will you spell again?
Anyway, you wanna do it.
Okay.
I'm totally good with it.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. It's an honor to be here today. We've been-- My name is John Chaney, and I'm the CEO of Silver Auto Power. And we've been working on solar projects in this area for a long time. We're here because we think we've gotten this project to a point where we think we're ready and able to contribute to the value of the community, and contribute to the business people who have invested in making these solar projects. And we think it's an example of a long-term approach to building value in communities, as well as building long-term independence and power for California, we think also for the country. So, we're here because we're outsiders coming into the community, we're landowners, but we don't pretend to know the community as well as the people who live here, and have lived here for a long time. So we've tried to be sensitive to everyone's needs, we want to listen carefully, we don't want to presume we understand everything. But we also want to move in a way that will help make these projects happen, and we believe they actually have a lot of value. So, we're very open to-- Our whole staff is open to listen. We want to make these crown jewels of California, we think this is the perfect place to do it. And we want to partner with the community and with the City of Lancaster for a long time. So, we've been here a while, we've been kind of quiet in the background, we're not as big as some of the other famous companies, but we're here early, we're still here, and we intend to stay here a long time. So, please, call us anytime. Thank you very much.
So why can't we put them underground instead of above-ground?
Good question. Usually it has to do with Cal ISO's rules of how you build power, probably has a lot to do with cost, which I don't know-- I know what some of the cost is, but I don't know what the cost there. And it would have to do with the long-term plans you have for the area, the aesthetics of it. It's a really good question, it deserves a lot of conversation. I wouldn't rule it out for something, because you asked the question. We should talk about that. Very much open that. I think the aesthetics of building, you have a great downtown area, it draws you here, you have a long-term view, it's very, very, very impressive, and you kind of want to think, if we're gonna be here for 20 years, you want to think that way.
Well, I don't want to-- Well, that's something you're willing to work with the staff on, without us having to take action?
Yeah, I mean, I actually don't know the complete impact of it myself, so, yeah, I mean, certainly.
And for future projects? I mean, I didn't know we were putting poles up anymore. It seems to me we should stop doing that.
We can certainly-- We'll meet on this particular project and for future projects, absolutely.
Okay. I was up in Kern County looking at the fracking operations they're doing, and they got these power poles running everywhere. It's-- It's a disgrace, it's really what it is.
We work very closely with the planning staff and your members.
Okay, good.
It's a good question, it has, you know, it's a fair question.
And while I'm sitting here, you know, ranting, I drove by E-Solar, and have you looked at that place lately? The windbreaks that they put on the fences are flying everywhere, it looks like-- Well, doesn't look very good.
No, I haven't been back there last--
Did you have somebody give them a call, tell them to fix it?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. I'm sorry, do you have a question?
I do.
Okay, hold on. Mr. Chaney, you want to come back?
Is there any way that we could-- Thank you, first of all, for coming and visiting us here. Is there any way that we could superimpose the panels in a diagram, so we can all have a visual? And as the mayor was saying, to even have the power lines underground and above-ground, so we can have a better visual of what it would look like?
It's very regulated. It has to do with, you know, the general local utility. It has to do with Cal ISO's rules. And there's -- there may be costs we don't know about because we haven't looked into it.
Okay.
Till now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You know, Mark, it seems to me that that's something we should be looking at in regards to, you know, how like if we put a sewer line in, as people tie in, they got to pay their share of it. You follow me?
We're looking at a lot of that already and Jason can probably fill it in more, but we are looking at that already.
Okay, just as long as we're moving in that direction, that's really all I want to know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hi. My name's Garrett Bean and I've been working with the City of Lancaster quite a bit on these projects. Just to kind of, you know, definitely address that point, Silverado does take the aesthetic impacts very seriously. One thing that Silverado has done is our projects are sited as close as possible to existing transmission infrastructure. So that's one of our goals, is to reduce the cost by citing close to transmission infrastructure, reduce the impact by needing to build new transmission infrastructure. So if you look at our projects, actually, they're remarkably close to either existing transmission infrastructure or some upgrade that was going to be built. So that's definitely one of our goals, so we'll continue to work with the city to address those problems as we move forward. To give you kind of a slight overview on some of the projects, we have three projects that are being heard tonight. You know, we want to be a good neighbor in this community. We take these appeals very seriously. We take the concerns of the community very seriously. We've met with Antelope Acres. We understand CROSS has filed an appeal which has some of the same members. So while you will render a decision on this appeal tonight, please keep in mind that the dialogue and discussion is ongoing. We're looking to set up a meeting with CROSS in the near future. We haven't had a chance to yet, but their concerns are valid concerns. We want to address those concerns and try and alleviate them as much as possible. So it's an ongoing discussion. We'll continue to work with the community. Like I said, you know, citing is very important to us. We've cited our projects in low environmental impact zones so that we don't have those impacts on biological and cultural, on aesthetics, as much as possible. We have several professionals here that have gone out and helped us assess these sites to make sure that these are the best sites to build solar on. So I think we've done a really good job at that. We started off with a large portfolio. We've narrowed it down to these projects because we feel that they're our best projects. These are contracted projects. They're real projects that are going to be moving forward. So now it's kind of our job to work with the community that has their concerns. We're working with -- had a meeting with Araxi today, who's with the City of Lancaster, who's going to help us do local recruiting for jobs for our solar panels. We're reaching out to -- we've been utilizing community members as well. I think some of them will speak in favor of the project tonight and we look forward to continue to do that. So if you have any questions, project-specific questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you throughout the night and please use our professionals as you need. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the opposition now. Virginia, from the paper I'm gathering that you probably are leading this. Do you want to pick the first couple speakers?
Mayor, council members, my name is Robert Kerekis.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Robert Kerekis.
Okay.
K-E-R-E-K-E-S. But before I get started, I wanted to -- the county requires lines underground, so I don't know, once they leave city limits, that it would seem like they'd have to go underground because all the other ones that are in the county are required to go underground. And I have been involved in meetings with both Garrett Bean and Ryan Galeria of Silverado, and they haven't been fruitful, so. I'm a member of the newly-formed group Citizens for Rural Open Space, CROSS, formed in response to solar facilities being built or proposed to be built in our area, Antelope Acres. And we have received support, though, from beyond Antelope Acres, including people in the City of Lancaster. Because we're recently formed, because we've had such a short time to organize and put our arguments together, we're not a legal group, we would really like to have a continuance on this item so we could submit more and so council members and staff could have more time to study our submissions. Citizens for Rural Open Space adopts and incorporates as our own the arguments of Labor's International Union of North America, Local Union Number 300, Concerned Citizens of the Western Antelope Valley, and Friends of Antelope Valley Open Space, all of whose contributions we greatly appreciate. Citizens for Rural Open Space formed just after the Lancaster Planning Commission okayed CUP 1107, so we're very new. I'm an organic gardener of many, many years, having also had for many years a column on the subject, printed in local periodicals such as The Mountain Yodler. Thus, I have been involved in nature for a long time, going back to my early twenties. I spent many years in different areas as a wild mushroom gatherer, having long experience in that field also. I worked in my early years in New York City as a staff photographer for what was then Chase Manhattan Bank. In more recent years, I had been doing local wildlife photography. I have produced photographic written reports on wildlife on the AV West Side for information relative to the attempted installation of wind turbines, which were defeated. Am I all that far along? I don't have much time. On the West Side, hence my concentration on birds and especially of raptors. I have received a commendation for Shirley M. Sanchamperson for CTEC informing me that my reports were very useful and that showed that residents can be very capable of producing information on wildlife in that area. I'm the one responsible for the photographic written report. That's all the time I have? Boy, not enough time to cover much.
You know, if you guys want to designate some speakers and, I mean, I, given the complexity of the issue, I see the problem, but I also don't see any benefit in giving, you know, we could be here till midnight. The concern I have about that is I don't think people make very good decisions when they're sleep deprived. So if you guys want to take five minutes and figure out three or four people to cover...
We have three people.
Okay.
Myself and Virginia and Judy.
Okay, how much time do you need?
Well, I'm about a third through what I have to show. If I had a little more time, I would appreciate it because I haven't even gotten to the arguments.
And what about all the other people? Who are they with? I mean, I got cards from...
Same. Oh, I don't know everybody else.
You're not all together?
No.
I see. Okay. Then I don't know what to do. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to...
I don't have opportunity to really present our arguments.
Help me out here. Do I have to open it up to everybody if I do this?
But we are the people who are...
Hold on one second. I got some legal requirements here that I got to deal with.
Yeah, if you open it up, obviously you could waive it, but the problem then is you're going to become selective as to who you waive it, waive the rules for. And it's going to be very difficult to administer and you're going to end up waiving it for a lot of presenters. I mean, the rule's been known for a long time, so I'm sympathetic.
All right, let's stay with the rules. I'm sorry. Who do you want to have follow you?
I can't get away from a little more time. We can certainly submit them, make them part of the record. Because, I mean, I have photographs here of kit foxes in the neighborhood. And I just recently got these.
I certainly want to see those.
Kit foxes are kind of, you know, on the...
Could you hand those to the city attorney, please?
Sure.
I want to look at those.
All right, and also badgers.
I want them all.
All right. It's too short.
Okay, who's next? Who did you want to have speak next, Virginia?
I'm a member of the Citizens for Rural Open Space. And Citizens for Rural Open Space adopts and incorporates as our own the arguments of Labor's International Union of North America, Number 300, Concerned Citizens of West Antelope Valley, and Friends of Antelope Valley Open Space. As their own, as their own. First, I'd like to know how many projects has Silverado done so far or completed in California or in this country or anywhere? Detailed in the correspondence that you received from Susan Zoncher is the evaluation of environmental effects for the initial study on CUP 1107 for Lancaster. Similar projects in close proximity to Western Antelope Dry Ranch were evaluated by LA County. The evaluation of environmental effects for those projects showed 16 of 19 environmental factors as being potentially affected, whereas Lancaster project cites no environmental effect for all 18 factors. How can there be such a difference of opinion? An EIR is requested so this discrepancy can be addressed and for other issues that are submitted as well. Spurs jobs go, the handout by Silverado attached to the correspondence by Virginia Stowe lists 600 jobs cumulatively for several years, possibly one, two, or three, for other 12 projects, and eight to 12 full-time jobs out of all this. Would all these be sustaining jobs for the future or will there be new migratory jobs and a new form of migrant workers? And the EIR is requested so the public can fully be informed and given adequate opportunity to comment and completely identify threats to the environment. Due to lack of time to prepare the appeal, the comments of C.C. Wave and Fowles and J.W. Cornet are not all submitted as attachments but are to be included as their own arguments. Thank you.
Thank you. Virginia Stowe? Yeah.
Can you hear me now? All right, I'm going to include some of the things that Robert may have brought out if he had had time and try to get them all in. The MND was very poor in the biology department. It did not even mention the badgers and the kit foxes that live out there, not only cumulatively. If they had done a cumulative report, they would have seen how close they live to the area, that they cross across there, that they use it for foraging, and those are sensitive species on that. The MND doesn't even mention any of the loss of food sources that will currently happen when all of these projects together, not just this one, but the ones that's coming across the street and then all of the ones that Silverado has, and they're fenced, all fenced around it with whatever the city landscaping is, which Mayor may not even be having anything to do with, you know, the rural area out there. The American Audubon Society lists 8,000 important bird areas, 424, that have special status to the quote "global conservation concern." One of them is the Western Antelope Valley because it says, quote, "It is an excellent indicator, the amount of birds are an excellent indicator of the biodiversity richness that's out there and is threatened by the solar spall that is coming out there, the species that have been extirpated in the rest of LA County." We feel that there's a grassland bird community on the farmland where the grasses come up and the shrubs come up, and it's especially in winter, the Audubon Society says that's the best time to come. Many of them come down to forage in the winter. That was not included on that. Walking one day across Silverado's Project 1107, as their biologist reported, shows a lack of understanding of the unique nature of the desert and the recovery of the farmland that's out there. The Chambers Group that they relied on, this Californian Nature Biodiversity Database is the California Fish and Game Department says not to rely on that because they are totally voluntary and are not kept up to date. And they choose not to even quote them themselves on this. Dr. James Cornet, who was the biologist that helped you to go do the beautiful prime desert woodlands, helped to be the, to choose all of that area, has said that these surveys should have been done up to 100 yards at least beyond that because the game goes on and off. The burrowing owls won't even return to their burrows if the wind is up to 12 miles an hour. And the fact that you would rely on a, simply a check simply before you start indicates that you just like, that you just care about having, well, if we accidentally find something, we'll remove it, otherwise there's just nothing there. There's no burrow, there's no food, anything like that. We believe we have a fair argument that if we had time to present that, to include full public comment and CEQA law says that there's a serious public controversy over the environmental effects, the lead agency shall consider the effects subject to the controversy to be significant and shall prepare an EIR. And cumulative impacts can result from individually minor but collectively significant projects taking place over a period of time, closely related past, present, and reasonably foreseeable future. And we quoted that right out of CEQA law. So we feel that we'd like you to do an EIR so that the public has a chance to comment and so that we'll all know exactly what is being lost and what is being replaced and if it's worth it and so that we can all be on board. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Marshall Chance? Good evening.
Councilman. Okay, I'm just a layman. Yeah, I'm an electrician. I've been an electrician my entire life. I've lived in the Antelope Valley for the last 12 years here in Lancaster. I also live in a rural area. Due to the lack of work in California and around the country, I've had to travel to different states to try to maintain a household. Sometimes that's the nature of construction. We don't bake cookies. All the jobs are temporary. But a couple of years ago, I was on the verge of losing my home because there was no work anywhere. Due to these solar projects, I've been able to get back in the black and sustain my home. I can take care of my kids, help out my children with my grandchildren. The environmental impact, yeah, the desert is beautiful. I love it. Like I said, I live in the desert myself. I really don't see too much damage. The panels are usually low-profile. They don't ruin the views. The animals, they come back. You know, they, you know, some are displaced for a little while, but they return. I really haven't seen any thing that I consider long-term damage, but time will tell. But, you know, for the most part, you know, people are saying these jobs are Band-Aid. All construction is temporary. I think these projects will do good for the community. Like I said, I've been able to save my home. I've seen other people from the community get back on their feet and they do business right here in Lancaster and the surrounding area. And I'm intrigued by these projects.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here representing Paving the Way Foundation. We work in the community with different interests to help make the community a better place. Currently, we work with different solar companies in providing solar training and solar opportunities to help the economic impact of solar. So I'm really here more about the economic side than the environmental side, but I do want to mention we are also a, as a community-based organization, very concerned about the environment. We've helped sponsor community gardens. We do a lot of work to promote green energy and the green place that we live. We work currently with at-risk youth, veterans, second-chance citizens, to help provide them economic opportunities, as well as normal, everyday citizens to help have a, as Mr. Vance was just saying, have an opportunity that doesn't exist in a lot of ways today for people to have a job, to be able to promote wholeness within the community, to help keep a home, do things like that. And that has happened through green-collar jobs through the solar industry. Recently, I ran across a statistic that over 3 million jobs have come across during the recession in the green-collar opportunity, and Lancaster has been a big part of that with helping encourage lower local hiring and having people work here. We are very excited about the long-term aspects of solar. Yes, the construction projects themselves sometimes are short-term, but there are many opportunities available, many projects that are coming, as well as I can speak directly for the clients that we have trained, have gone on into supervisory positions, management positions, working for the solar companies directly after starting at an entry-level solar installation job. So it is an industry with a lot of forward momentum and growth opportunities available, as well as the immediate job needs of the community. I want to mention also some of our clients. I'm just speaking from people that have talked to us, that are involved in this process directly. One of our solar graduates has gone on to work on a pro... he's actually working on the Recurrent project, and he's out there, and they have very stringent guidelines for environmental impact while they're out there. They have speed limits and areas that the trucks must follow, dust control, environmental impacts that they monitor very closely. He came back and just spoke to us about that. And if they don't follow those guidelines, they're actually fired. So it's taken very seriously by many different companies that are working in the solar industry. And I just thank you for the opportunity to come forward and speak about the economic impact that these solar jobs provide, because it does help our community. It is putting people to work. It is making Lancaster a better place. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come up here and speak. My name is Marge Beal, and I'm here in favor of the appeal against the Silverado solar projects on the west side. I moved to Lancaster in 1958 with my parents, and I've been a resident here ever since on the west side. First of all, I would like to thank you and all the people in Lancaster that have put solar panels on their roofs and over the parking lots, just like you have out here. And this shows incredible amount of foresight and common sense. Before we destroy any more open space and wildlife habitat, I would like to see the city of Lancaster put these panels on all of the huge parking lots that we have. We have hundreds, if not thousands, of acres of paved parking lots where these solar panels could be, which is also going to employ people. It's going to take workers to do the job here in Lancaster instead of destroying the open land. I mean, continuing to strip off every last blade of vegetation, which is going to be creating more dust, and then there's the threat of valley fever. No one's mentioned that yet. It is here in the soil. And, you know, not only is this a threat to the students of Del Sur School, it is a threat to everyone who lives in Lancaster. I have lived here in this valley long enough to know which way the wind blows, and Lancaster is downwind of all of these projects that they're putting in on the west side. So I would like to see solar done right by putting rooftop, solar... doing solar installations on rooftops and all of these parking lots. I mean, wouldn't anybody here in Lancaster like to have a shaded parking place in the summertime when they go shopping? I mean, this is still employing people, so why aren't we doing this?
Well, unfortunately, it's private property. I mean, you know, we were able to do it on city property. I'm able to do it on my personal property, but we do have private property rights. I mean, it really is up to the people who own the parking lots.
We have all of these huge buildings and warehouses. It's just seems like an incredible...
No, I agree with you. I absolutely agree with you. It defies reason why every parking lot isn't covered.
Yes.
But this is America. You know, I don't get to make those choices. The person that owns the property does. And, you know, the question I have is, how is this any less disruptive than a housing tract?
I guess in that case it isn't, but I mean, we're losing more and more open space. We're losing wildlife habitat.
But isn't this disturbed land already?
No.
Ryan? Yeah, disturbed land, meaning they cultivated it. They put alfalfa fields up there.
Then it's feeding grounds for the wildlife, the birds, the rafters.
But if the choice is between the solar panels and another housing tract that is going to block the view of the mountains, at least the one they built behind my house did, the... it seems to me, why would we be opposed to this? I mean, to me, that really is the crux to the matter. It seems to me that this is less disruptive than a housing tract, and that's what the property was scheduled to be.
When they start grading all this land and creating all this dust, we see the dust from the project on 170th and 138, and it's headed right towards town. I mean, everyone in Lancaster should be very, very concerned about this.
Well, if they violate the dust abatement rules in the city, we actually prosecute them for that. We actually enforce it a little different than the county does. But still, that's the question I have. I mean, how... Wouldn't we rather have this than a housing tract? I mean, the last thing I want is another housing tract. But that's what they were going to build before. Perhaps when the other speakers come up, they can address that.
Okay. Anyhow, thank you for letting me give you my views.
Thank you.
Quick question for the developer, though. When the project's finally done, how closed off is that project? Do you put landscaping up there, or is it like a completely sealed-off area with fencing?
Well, go look at E-Solar. Don't do that fence.
Flapping in the wind.
In other words, when it comes to the concerns on the wildlife, what they're saying is it going to be open in places where kit foxes or coyotes or anything else can commute through underneath the solar panels? Because I know some solar panels are out there, and there's wildlife that actually comes back and goes underneath.
Right. So our projects are fenced around the entirety of the site, and there is vegetation that surrounds the site, per the Lancaster code. So we will be doing that. Yes, there is the opportunity for some wildlife to come back. At this point, our fences aren't elevated, but, you know, we can, you know, consider that, so maybe some critters can come back and forth underneath. But, yeah, as far as openness to the top, yes, they're open. They're spaced far above.
I didn't think it was a dome over it, but...
Nope, no biodomes.
Nor is there any shade, okay? Mitch Klein?
Yeah, the shade would sort of reduce that solar effect.
That's...
No canopies.
Are you Mitch Klein, too?
No, no.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Mitch Klein. I'm a business representative for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. I want to speak in favor of this project. This project has saved many people. We have several hundred people working at the solar sites on Avenue D. Many of them are local residents. These are badly needed jobs, and it'd be a savior to this community. We've had several job fairs through the EDD and WorkSource Centers. We've taken many people that are local residents from in the area, in surrounding areas from Antelope Valley, and put them to work. And this is about jobs, and this is what's so badly needed. And I'm speaking in favor of this in wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate the enthusiasm, but I also recognize that it has a... an effect of people who have an opposing view not wanting to speak when we do that. So if we could hold the applause, I'd really appreciate it. All right? Thank you. Larry Jernigan? I'm having trouble reading it.
Well, before I start my speech in favor, I would just like to offer a thank you to the council. That doesn't go against my time, does it? About a year ago, I came before you to lobby for a clock on Lancaster Boulevard. So I want to thank you for that clock, and I want to thank you for the beautiful Lancaster Boulevard and how it's been improved. And I really like the theater down there that has movies for us adults, too, you know? So I want to thank you for that, too.
It's not an adult movie theater.
Not that type of movie, but...
Grown-up movies.
But I'm still... I'm still like seeing a post clock that says something like, you know, Lancaster was founded in 1886 or incorporated in 1977.
Me, too. I thought that was a poor substitute, that clock they put up. We should work on that.
Yeah, maybe right there in front of the Performing Arts or something. I don't know. But just adds a little class, I guess, to the area. But thank you for Lancaster Boulevard and the clock. Again, my name's Larry Jernigan. I'm celebrating my 50th year here in the beautiful Antelope Valley. I graduated from Palmdale High School. I live in Quartz Hill, and my business is a block west here in downtown Lancaster, All Valley Surveying. So in the Valley Press, I believe a year or two ago, the Valley Press quoted you, Mayor Paris, as saying that you wanted Lancaster to be the solar capital of the world. So we've got a guy here that's helping you do that. Garrett Bean has been working hard the last few years to help you do that by creating these solar projects. And I've been helping Garrett Bean, because he hired me, a local company, All Valley Surveying, to do at least five preliminary surveys for these solar projects. So again, he is hiring local people before construction even starts. So I think that is a good thing. I know they've been involved in the community. They've joined the Board of Trade and a lot of other things, and they're just... my association with Garrett, he just has a good heart and wants to do what's right for the community. And I really appreciate him and his company. So, conclusion, because it's telling me to conclude, this project is good for the city. It's good for the environment. It's good for the economy, and all of our workers here in the Antelope Valley, particularly once construction starts, and it's good for energy independence, which our presidential candidates are even talking about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mel Lane?
Good evening, Mayor Paris, City Manager Mark Blazekin, and distinguished members of the council. My name is Mel Lane. I'm the soon-retiring president of the Greater Antelope Valley Economic Alliance, and I'm here to speak in favor of the project. A number of years back, my organization worked with a global engineering firm to bring in 150 solar developers to look at developing projects on Edwards Air Force Base so that they could get their costs in line with what they knew was coming, a reduction in funds. And as a result of that, we've met with a number of those companies, and their... the present investment of the companies just that we have met with is $10 billion in our particular area. That's going to generate enough electricity to take care of all the single-family homes. There's about 1.7 million single-family homes in LA County, and that's enough to generate electricity to take care of all those homes when they're all online. We agree with the staff that not all these projects are going to happen at one time. They're going to happen over time, and that's going to provide an ongoing ability to hire people. Our statistics also prove that, or shows that, there is less construction jobs in the Antelope Valley now than there was in 2001, about 660 jobs less. And in a high unemployment area, we feel that this is great for the economy to keep people here and keep them working. Our hope is that it will last long enough so that when housing recovers, then if and when, it will at some point in time, but when it does, that these construction workers then can go back maybe to a normal lifestyle that they've enjoyed for some time. We also feel that the value that's generated in tax dollars, one of the projects that we worked on, will be paying $20 million in tax to the county. Also, in talking with Kern County people, they expect this project up in Kern County to also generate more tax revenue to that county than oil does. And if you know, oil is a tremendous asset in Kern County, and one of the leading counties in the nation as far as oil production. We also believe in the individual property rights of people that own property to be able to develop their property in the way they see fit, provided it is properly mitigated by law. And so in that, I'll conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitch, I can't... you're going to have to help me with your last name.
Cy.
Cy, okay. Thank you.
Mayor Paris, City Council, thank you very much for our opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Mitchell Cy. I'm here on behalf of the Laborers International Union of North America, Local Number 300, the most progressive and fastest-growing union construction workers here in the United States. The laborers, in addition, I'm also representing a number of Lancaster residents, voicing a number of concerns about this project. LIANA and its members support renewable energy. However, LIANA also believes that these projects need to be approved in compliance with state and local environmental laws, as well as adopt the maximum mitigation measures that are possible to abate their health and safety impacts on the environment, as well as on local residents and workers. SESTAFF is recommending that this project be adopted with a mitigated negative declaration, which under the California Environmental Quality Act involves a finding that this project has no potentially significant impact on the environment. We have previously submitted comment letters from Matt Hageman, a former senior policy advisor from US EPA, as well as the expert biologist, Dr. Sean Smallwood, that raises a number of potentially significant concerns concerning this project, concerning agriculture, biological resources, air quality, as well as the release of hazardous materials into the environment here in Los Angeles. Finally, just on a side note, the council voiced some concerns about underground, about the possibility of placing underground wires for this project. I would obviously have to look a little bit more closer at that, but you would have to go back and adopt another mitigated negative declaration, go back and look at the project if the project was to amend, because this would comprise significant changes to the project under CEQA, if you're able to... if you wanted to adopt that measure. CEQA bars approval of this project with a simple MMD if there is a fair argument that project will result in significant environmental impact. In the earlier Plan Commission hearing, there was a disagreement between county council and our firm about whether or not what was a fair argument, what is considered a fair argument under CEQA. A fair argument under CEQA under California law is not similar to other, is a significant standard that's separate from other standards that are frequently utilized under administrative laws and under administrative decisions such as this. In particular, the California Supreme Court in Communities for a Better Environment versus South Coast AQMD stated that if no EIR has been prepared for a non-exempt project, but substantial evidence in the record supports a fair argument that the project may result in significant adverse effects, then the properator needs order preparation of the EIR. In addition, a similar treaty said that the fair argument standard by contrast prevents lead agencies from weighing competing evidence to determine who has a better argument concerning the likelihood or extent of environmental impact. The lead agencies are largely legal rather than factual determination. It does not resolve conflict. It simply determines whether or not there is a conflict. I urge that you do not approve this project, but instead adopt a call for the staff to adopt environmental impact, to begin the process for environmental impact report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
No problem.
You stated that's under the South Coast?
That's... no, it was this particular California Supreme Court case. It's called Communities for a Better Environment versus South Coast Air Quality Management District. If you want the case citation, I can give it to you. It's in the letters and materials that we've sent to you, so you can take a closer look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Pelkoff? Scott Pelco?
Well, it seems pretty evident that quite a few citizens here that are concerned about the, the fact that there's not an environmental impact report done. And it would probably ease a lot of people's concerns if there actually was one done, which there probably should be one done because frankly, if I wanted to build a building someplace here in town, I would probably have to have an environmental impact report on a piece of property that had never been developed before. Anybody here would have the same thing, well, you know. I mean, look at the disaster that happened when Walmart was going to come into Quartz Hill and not a proper EIR was developed for that. And we saw the results of that, and there was a lot of litigation in court, and they didn't develop the Walmart. So, you know, how much is this going to cost a city if not a proper EIR is actually developed? And, you know, you know, does the city of Lancaster actually need another lawsuit against them? So that's basically all I have to say.
Thank you.
Nice that you paid attention to me, Mr. Paris, while I was talking.
David Gomez?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Good evening. My name is Dave Gomez. I'm with the National Electrical Contractors Association. I represent entrepreneurs and IBW, the Electricians Union. Also a resident in the Antelope Valley for over 23 years, and actually an electrician. I worked with the Tools for 20 years. Two things. One, we need jobs, jobs. These are green jobs. One thing, too, is these workers, we're putting many of them in our apprenticeship program. It's a career. They'll not just work on this project, they're going to work on other projects in solar. Thirty, it's a 30-year career. Second, I don't believe it's a significant impact. Already, projects already going and under the CEQA and under the general plan. So I'm in favor of this project and to deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comment. Any discussion?
I'd actually like to make a comment if it were appropriate. Full disclosure for the others in the room that don't...
Good practice for you.
You know, I am a sitting planning commissioner for the city of Lancaster, and the seven commissioners, we all did due diligence on, we exercised due diligence before we voted on this project. We listened to the townspeople of the Antelope Acres, and there's a lot of compassion that goes that, you know, that direction. As a lot of us did grow up in urban areas, we also worked with Mr. Bean. We went out with staff, and we drove not just this project, but several of the projects that are out there. And I just wanted to make sure that it is not at least realized that the sitting planning commission actually did due diligence and research. I just feel like I needed to at least express that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I, I think I need to recuse myself because we have a solar program at the university, and we deal with some of the companies for placement.
If there's a reasonable likelihood that it might result in income to the university, then I think, yes, you should.
Your call.
I know. I'm thinking, well, the students attend at the university, but we support them after education, after receiving their education, I should say, to find jobs for them. So we would build a relationship with companies, solar companies, to place, hopefully, the students for jobs. But it's not that the companies pay the university any money at all, but there would be a relationship for placement reasons.
The, I think the, the argument would be that the placement results in the university having a better reputation among the students, therefore getting more students to come there because they know they get jobs at the end. That, I mean, that would be the argument that somebody would make in, in favor of your recusing yourself.
Okay.
I don't know that we have enough facts yet to really make a clear determination. I think it's a very close case, and most of those times I would err on the side of caution.
Okay. I just felt it needed to be said to make sure what would be best.
Can I have one, please?
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to speak, if I may, Mayor.
Hey, one second, Ken.
Go ahead.
I sit on the board of directors on the University of Antelope Valley.
Board of trustees.
Board of trustees.
Hey, listen, can we take a five-minute break so we can kind of figure this all out?
Hi. How are you?
Mayor Paris, how are you?
Been a long time.
Yes, it has. We've been looking at my place all evening long. That's my house. That's my ranch. That's where I've worked my hands to the bone. That caused a divorce trying to keep that property. There, I think I know better than anybody what goes on out in that area. I had a whole little story to tell you, but I'm just going to get into what, this flew into my yard. It says environmentally sensitive area. Okay? I saw some more going out across the street there, and all along there, these are posted on wooden sticks. Now, it's farther back in that area right there. It's where there's a gully in the middle when you're going out to the road. I don't know who trip is, and I don't know why it's environmentally sensitive area, but it says to call in before entering. I thought that was interesting. Ron Amrod made a comment in the paper last Thursday or Friday when he was talking about the rodeo. It's a heritage up here that we have, the cowboy way of life. We cannot be taking everybody's land. I'm all for change and solar energy, but we don't know what's going to be ending up in the ground. I know that they say they have to test the panels under lock and key up at that one place to see whether they're, they have the ability to be safe. They haven't proven that they're safe yet, and you can't grow anything after they've been, you know, with the panels above them. And downwind sincerely, that's where it's going to go. And if we have an earthquake, that's going to be unimaginable because those things will crack up, and you're going to see the silicone, I don't even know how to pronounce the words that they have, that are very bad chemicals in those solar panels, especially the thin-film ones. If they had the other kind, it would be prohibited for the price. So they've gone to this film and taking, they last 20 years. What happens in 20 years? I know the past 20 years of my life, gone, and I still am fixing the place up out there. And you have to get rid of them, too. You can't reuse them. They fall apart, and they're finding out that in the desert, they're falling apart. You said you saw something flying in off of a fence. Well, it's happening on the panels, too, and the rain and everything like that. I've seen rain come through. They close the streets down through that area from the aqueduct. When they're afraid the aqueduct's going to come over, they close all that area down so it would be flooded also. There are owls. There are kangaroo rats, which are in fact protected, to my knowledge, with the state of California. I have owls and hawks on my property. They're wild. I have horses. I have dogs. I have sheep. The sheep fly through there, not fly, but graze through there twice a year. And my animals, I don't want them to be impacted by it, or myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There was one other person?
Hi, Maria Pizano.
Hi.
I just wanted to speak about what I've seen happen in this valley. I mean, I'm, I'm pretty saddened about not just the way that the land has, has just totally, it's turned into a wasteland, but what it's done to people, too, in this community where we've lived because there's no jobs and the way that things have changed in this valley. I came back to this town to become a teacher because it was something that I really felt important to do for the happiness of the kids and to make a difference, which is something I haven't been able to do now. They're trying, they're taking away my credentialing for this area, and it's something that I would really need to speak with someone about, if that's possible.
It's a different issue, and we'd be happy to help you afterwards, but...
Because I'm getting no, no kind of help with that or no relief with that at all. I mean, there's a lot of issues behind that also that, you know...
Okay. Mark, if you could talk to her after we're done, and if there's something we can do, we'll see what we can do. Okay.
And also, like I said, with all these projects that are going on in town, you know, I mean, if that's, if that's the kind of an area that we want, there's no trees, there's no anything there. I mean, it's sad to look at that and see, you know, how there's nothing, it's just, like I said, it's just a wasteland here. I mean, we may have some buildings in, in one area up here, like on the boulevard, but there's many shops and stuff that are closed, businesses have closed down, there's no jobs. I mean, I know a lot of people that have been out of work for quite some time. So, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a real concern. And I'm, you know, I'm emotional right now, like I'm sure you guys know I have been when I come up here because of all the things that have happened, and it's just the impact of things over and over, and the things I've had to watch people go through, you know, people I care about, people that are good people, that have, you know, put in a lot of hard work and are sincere about the things they do. And it's, you know, it's just, it's, it's hard to have to deal with day in and day out. So, and then to have no relief anywhere.
Okay. Mark, Mark will talk to you afterwards, and we'll see if we can help you, okay? Thank you. Okay. Reclose the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, before, before you do that, I think Mr. Ludiki needs to make a quick comment.
I don't have to open the public hearing for that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mayor Paris, members of the council, one of the speakers was a, an attorney who's representing Lyuna, a union, and he made the comment that they had submitted information and spoken in regards to this particular project site at the planning commission hearing. I'd like to state they did not. They did submit information and did speak on the record in regards to the other two projects that are on your agenda, but on this particular site, they did not submit any information, nor did their representative at the planning commission speak on this specific project site.
Mitchell.
Mitch Ty.
Mitch Ty was the one. Okay. All right.
The one that was requesting an EIR.
Correct. All right. Thank you. Okay. Any discussion?
Yes. You know, I know the mayor sat on the planning commission, and Ken sat on the planning commission for a long time, and myself, too. It is, it is the, the usual argument about the open space, and they say, look at all this land and, and what we have, and that's why we do a general plan, because somebody owns that piece of property, and that piece of property is zoned R2.5. So that's why we have a general plan, to say, look, this is how we're going to grow. And I don't know how many times we've had people come to the planning commission and say, wait a minute, you're going to build houses here, let's go to block our view. And as the mayor said, I think the, the impact, that visual impact is probably less with a little bit of landscaping and these solar panels. When it comes to CEQA, we did a negative deck, and CEQA allows that. I don't think it rises to the threshold of significant impact, and so we don't have to go on with an EIR. That's one of the things that's causing so many jobs to leave California. CEQA's been used as a tool to stop things and to tweak it, and it's gone way out of proportion, and businesses just can't do businesses here anymore. And because CEQA has been such an onus, and I think we did the right thing, I think the planning commission did the right thing on this, and I think, I think you guys did a good job. You looked at it, and like you said, you got a lot of due diligence.
Mitchell, you're in trouble.
Yeah, I like to say that we, the council members, are determined to make a difference in our community with jobs. That's one of the things that we're really focusing on, is creating jobs. Of course, we're being cautious of how we do that, as some people have addressed our concerns, but the main goal here is to create jobs, to have us all have a purpose here in our community, to be able to, to be there for our children and pay our mortgage bills. And ultimately, that's what our goal is here as council members, is to be able to create jobs. And this is a great opportunity to do so. And I do have a question, though, if I may ask the question to you. If, have you ever dealt with any potential environment, environmental impacts at other projects that you've had, and if so, how did you deal with it?
Yes, we have seen environmental impacts at some sites. A lot of those sites, we chose not to pursue, and we stopped development on them. These are sites that we went out, did research on, and found out that there was low to negligible impacts. When there is an impact to a species, then we work with the DFG, California Department of Fish and Game, to mitigate for those impacts. And there's standards and protocols that we follow in compliance with CEQA and the California Fish and Game Code. So that's how we deal with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we, I'll move that we adopt resolution number 12-64, upholding the planning commission's decision and denying the appeal.
I'll second that motion.
Let's vote. Two unanimous. Okay. Moving on to PH2. Mr. Ludiki.
Mayor Paris, members of the council, this particular hearing covers approximately 293 acres in two different sites and includes several different cases. That includes General Plan Amendment number 1202, which would redesignate approximately 216 acres of this property from its current designation of urban residential to non-urban. A zone change that would rezone those same acreages from a combination of R7 and R10,000 to RR2.5. Conditional use permit number 1208, which is the one that would cover the project more to the right, a project site to the right, which was to develop a 20-megawatt PV solar facility on 135 acres. And conditional use permit number 1209, which would look to develop approximately 158 acres with a 40-megawatt PV solar facility. Originally, there was also a request as a part of these project or case applications to rescind development agreement number 8901, which covered the 216 acres that is proposed for a change to the general plan and the zoning. However, that development agreement on those particular properties actually expired on October 18th. Therefore, there's no longer a need to hear that particular part of this case. The 216 acres that are proposed for the general plan amendment and zone change are part of the overall 880-acre Del Sur Ranch project, which the city originally approved in 1990 and has subsequently modified several times. The general plan land use and zoning designations on those areas would allow, under the current regulations of the city, the development of approximately 700 single-family residences. Approval of the general plan amendment and the zone change would revert the sites back to non-urban rural designations and would effectively rescind the Del Sur Ranch approvals on those particular areas. The balance of the Del Sur Ranch project site, which actually encompasses an area kind of between these two project sites, would not be affected by this action. It would retain its development agreement and its entitlement approvals that are in place. We do believe from a staff perspective that the approval of both the general plan amendment and the zone change are appropriate from a long-term city perspective. Allowing the urban-style designations to remain in place would potentially allow for the development of a... to non-urban rural designations and would effectively rescind the Del Sur Ranch approvals on those particular areas. The balance of the Del Sur Ranch project site, which actually encompasses an area kind of between these two project sites, would not be affected by this action. It would retain its development agreement and its entitlement approvals that are in place. We do believe from a staff perspective that the approval of both the general plan amendment and the zone change are appropriate from a long-term city perspective. Allowing the urban-style designations to remain in place would potentially allow for the development of a significant area of tract housing that would require significant urban services, including additional street widening, traffic signals, park and school facilities, water, in fact, a usage of water of about 550 acre feet a year should those 700 houses actually be built, sewer systems, street lighting and other features that you find typically within the developed urban core of the city. Providing these types of services and facilities in this outlying area, we feel, would be a long-term fiscal, fiscal cost for the city that would not be balanced by any expected revenues from that housing development. The conditional use permits, as I indicated, cover two separate sites. The first one, 1208, is the 135 acres that's located to the right of the map that you have. It not only includes the portion of the Del Sur Ranch project that surrounds or is to the north and west of the Del Sur School, but it also includes the property to the north that is owned by a gentleman known as, named John Recker. We have had actually direct contact with him and he has indicated he is very supportive of this application and request. The second site, CUP 1209, which is the one to the lower left, covers 158 acres. Now, as part of the project review for this, as we did for the other site, we conducted an environmental evaluation and initial study. That included technical studies that looked at air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, biological resources, cultural resources and phase-one hazardous materials. Once again, if you have any specific questions about those studies, people who prepared those are available to answer them. The studies found that the proposed projects would not exceed the thresholds for air quality impacts that are established by the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District. It also noted that there is a potential for burrowing owls to be located on these sites and it did also note that there was a Swenson's hawk foraging above one of the sites. Because of that potential for foraging to occur and of course, the opportunity for burrowing owls, they are required, should the approval be put in place, under the mitigation measures in the initial study to conduct the appropriate pre-construction surveys and meet fishing game protocols, should they note those species being present. There were no other significant effects that were really noted by the initial study that could not be adequately mitigated. The appellant's claim in this case is once again that the EIR is necessary for the proposed projects. They have submitted information as part of the planning commission hearing, but they have not submitted anything beyond that. So, essentially, what we evaluated and what the planning commission evaluated during that hearing is the same information that they also are presenting to you now. In that analysis, they did not conduct any separate technical studies on either of these sites. In fact, their, their representative at the planning commission hearing, upon a direct question from the planning commission, stated that none of their experts had even visited either of these sites. They did instead try to rely on projects that were located in other counties and other locations in regards to air quality impacts. They, on biological issues, included information that our bio, or that the biologist had indicated would not be impacts on the site, specifically golden eagles were raised as one of the issues. However, the Chambers Group biologist indicated that they would not be expected to be on the site because suitable habitat is not nearby for them to be located there. From staff's view, the failure to conduct any separate studies or provide the facts necessary to make a fair argument were not met by the appellant's in this case. In regards to cumulative impacts, as I indicated on the previous case, solar projects are somewhat unique. They tend not to have ongoing issues with traffic, air quality, noise and the typical things that you look at from a cumulative impact standpoint. Once again, we do not believe that these projects would, one, adversely affect the biological resources on a cumulative basis based on the technical studies that were done. We also do not believe that they are going to all be developed at the same time in concert with other projects, therefore, the air quality and other construction impacts are not all likely to occur at the same time. They are tend, they would tend to occur over a period of time and therefore, are not reaching the cumulatively considerable standard that the appellant has noted. A fair argument standard, and it was raised by this appellant's attorney previously, we do not believe has been met. The SEQA guidelines state that a fair argument is basically means that enough relevant information is provided, but it does not include argument, speculation, unsubstantiated opinion or narrative. It must include facts, reasonable assumptions based on facts, expert opinions supported by facts. The failure to conduct any specific studies on either of these two projects, in our view, means that those facts are not evident or presented by the appellant. In contrast, the initial study has those facts, based on the technical studies that were done and the initial study that was put out, reviewed through the state clearinghouse and we gave every agency the chance to comment on it. In closing, I would like to reiterate that once again, the choice that's facing us here is not a choice between vacant land and a solar project. It is really a choice between whether to allow for the possibility of a solar project to proceed or to allow the urban land use and zoning designations to remain in place on significant portions of these sites. In staff's view, the solar projects would in fact, be much more compatible with the rural area that they are located in, rather than the impacts that would come to air quality, light, noise and traffic impacts from the development of 700 tract-style houses within this area. I know from my position as the planning director and having been in this city a long time, I have sat through numerous hearings where Antelope Bakers residents have gotten up and spoken about how upset they are and how much they do not like the Del Sur Ranch project. It would be somewhat interesting at this point, I think, to hear them argue against a proposal that would in fact, preclude portions of that project from being developed. And as I've said, we feel that the proposal that's in front of you is far better than that Del Sur Ranch project that exists right now in an approval state on those properties. We're therefore recommending that you approve the general plan amendment, introduce the ordinance to rezone the properties and adopt resolution 1266, denying the appeal and upholding the planning commission's approval of both CUP 1208 and CUP 1209. This has been a very complicated case. It had a lot of testimony in front of the planning commission. Jim Vos, the chairman of the commission is here. I don't know if he has any information he would like to add that the council should consider, but I'd like to give him that opportunity.
Mr. Ludiki.
Yes.
The fact that they have not presented any facts doesn't mean those facts don't exist. You know, I think it's incumbent upon us to, to know what the, the true facts are and make a decision accordingly. And I, I'm not happy with the, the, the tenor of how this is being presented. I think the people of Del Sur are supposed to do that. They're supposed to come here. They're supposed to try to protect whatever they hold dear to them, to their, to their families. You know, we, we have difficult decisions to make here, but that does not mean they shouldn't be here raising those issues.
I don't disagree.
And I'm also not totally convinced that there isn't a, an impact to the cumulative nature of all of these. I just haven't been able to see it yet. But I'm, I'm, I think we should always remain open to this and, and there is nobody that's a bigger proponent of solar energy than I am. At least, I don't think there is. The, I mean, that person may exist out there someplace, but I, I never want to get to the place where I'm, I'm closing my mind to the possibility that we're making a mistake because as soon as we do that, you can, you can bet we will start making mistakes.
I understand, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, I was speaking really to the written documentation that was provided by the attorneys representing Lyuna. I am not speaking really to the testimony of the residents.
I, I also am mindful of the fact that, that sometimes it's best to say nothing and I'm really presenting that to the proponents. I mean, once you've won, why engage in this? For what it's worth, you know?
Sure. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Betty Bender? Bet you didn't want to be first, did you?
It's okay. I, I want to thank you, Mayor Paris and the city council for listening to me. I'm sorry I was here late and couldn't talk earlier and about the work boots because I came straight from work. I work on the solar fields. I was 18 months on unemployment and when that ran out in May, we almost lost the house we rent because I was our sole income. I live with my daughter and one of my sons. Three of my sons work out on the solar fields now. Two of them have girlfriends who work there. Many of their neighbors do and they're very excited about the career opportunities that the local 11 has offered them. Two of them have already passed their apprentice exam. I am so grateful to work for a company that treats their employees as well as they do and who are as conscientious as Conti Electric is about the environment. I've worked out doing glass. I work in the office now because they found out I had computer skills. And I kind of am sad that I'm not out doing glass because I like being outside. I care about wildlife. The fences have open places for the coyotes to run through and several times they have and torn apart people's lunches. And when that happens, they've actually closed down glass production and put everybody on garbage cleanup. It is spotlessly clean out there as far as garbage. Everything is picked up immediately. Nothing's allowed to lay around. What else did I want to say? We see kangaroo rats and raptors of different kinds out there. They don't seem to be too bothered. And I do care about wildlife very much. I've always been a proponent of wildlife. But the jobs are so important and there are a large number of local people working there. I've heard rumors that the local people are the first to go when layoffs start and that's not the way it's done. It's done, actually, they haven't really laid anybody off since I've started. They've doubled their workforce since I started there. And what will happen is that when the type of jobs that people without experience run out, like installing glass, those people will go, no matter where they're from. And then the journeyman will probably be the last to go because they can still plug and, and get electricity running, which I, I am not qualified to do at all and I, I wouldn't want to be the one out there trying to do it. But anyway, I just wanted to say that I believe that this has been a wonderful thing for this valley and for my family and friends and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to say that.
Thank you. Okay. Let me encourage you to pass if you're just going to reiterate what you've already said, but it's a public hearing, you're more than happy to speak if you want to. David Gomez.
Paul Cass.
Thank you. Mitchell.
Ty.
Should it be a term?
Oh, you're in trouble, I forgot.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm curious as a matter of fact.
So, just to, well, once again for the record, my name's Mitchell Ty here on behalf of Laborers International North America Local Number 300. To clarify the point that was brought up about the, these two separate projects, they are treated under the same initial study slash mitigate negative declaration under SEQA, which meant that we need to address them both. So, that's why, so if you look into our comment layers that we submitted today, we actually, we do expressly mention that we are submitting our comments on both of the, of the agenda items, PH1 and PH2.
You're okay, I'm just messing with you.
Yeah.
Good.
Any case, I just want to make, clarify a few things about the fair argument standard and our experts. Our experts may have not made a site visit, admittedly did not make a site visit, we're being honest about that, but what, if in particular...
Believe me, we assume you're being honest about everything.
But our biological expert in particular stated that states that the biological surveys that were conducted onsite don't meet professional standards. So, in, our, the arguments that are being forwarded by our, our experts, even though they're not necessarily site-specific, are very specific towards our analyzing specific environmental documents that you're basing the decision on today. And then...
So, why is a union against this? I mean, cut to the chase. I mean, that's not computing. Why is a union against this?
Well, we're just environmental attorneys and we've been, simply been asked by the union to try to analyze this project for its environmental impacts. And the reason for that is because the union wants to protect the health and safety of its members who live, work and recreate in this area.
Which, yeah, maybe, what union is this that we're talking about? It gave the name, but what do they do?
Um, they're construction workers primarily, unskilled construction workers. The Laborers International North America.
Okay.
So, one of their strategies is that they believe, like, for example, one of the big arguments on air quality is PM, is particulate matter. So, we worry a lot, a lot of our expert comments focus on the air quality impacts and what it would, it would have on our members who live close by, as well as our members who may work on the project.
You, you really thought we were going to buy that one, did you? I thought you were, I thought you worked it out with the union. What happened? Different union?
No, we don't have any, I don't deal with, I don't deal with any of those kinds of negotiations. We just simply look at the EIR.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Larry Drennigan? Larry, I gave you the clock, come on.
Well, just something quick. A lot of businesses that are related to construction have really been suffering the last three years. I know one of our civil engineering companies in town, they basically just have a skeleton crew and principals went to work out aircraft because things are so bad. And they have been really bad for me and the surveying business too. But one thing, solar, both Garrett Company and we're doing the construction staking out at the project, recurrent project on Avenue I and 100th Street West. But see, to be able to hire people, well, first of all, my own employees that I had who were only working part-time because things were so bad, to see them work 40 hours a week and be able to catch up on their bills and things like that is just touching. And then to hire more employees that have been out of work for months and months and months has just been very rewarding. And it's just, it makes you feel good that you're hiring them to do something that is good for the community, good for the environment and really good for the world if you believe in global warming and all of that. It's just a good thing. So, that's all.
Is there anybody that doesn't believe in global warming?
Okay. Just a sanity check. Mitch Klein. Mitch, I'm telling you, 101 Law School, when you've won, stop talking.
Okay. I just want to say, I won't reiterate what I said before, but I just want, I want to bring across a point that, you know, through all our job fairs and work sources and, and all the people we've hired and we've taken these at-risk youths off the street, we've taken these gang bangers off the street, we've taken veterans, middle-aged people, they're all, we have over 700 people working out there right now. And if you correlate that, you'll notice crime has gone down in Lancaster. So, that's a good thing, right? So, that's why we're proponents for these solar projects. Thanks.
And I thought it was the airplane. Marshall Chance. Okay. Thanks, Marshall. Anthony Disney?
Thank you.
Steve Chisholm?
Well, he's coming up. When are you going to be, when does power hit the grid?
When I get through.
No, no, no.
Very good, Anthony.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and, and city council members.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Yes, my name is Steve Chisholm. I belong to International Brotherhood Electrical Workers, and I worked for Conti Electric out on Alpine Job. Prior to this job, I was out of work for eighteen months. I was drawn on unemployment, and I was on welfare. I had food stamps. My wife was so embarrassed that she would not go to the grocery store. I had to go. But thank God, this job came along. You'll have to excuse my ready appearance, but it was forty degrees this morning at six-thirty, and it was blowing thirty-five miles an hour. And that's just what I've been eating, dust and dirt all day. I am a high-voltage cable spicer. I am the one that's hooking up the thirty-five thousand volts that is going to feed the grid off this, off this. But I told a lot of my neighbors about this job prospect as soon as I got to work, and a lot of my neighbors have gone to work. And to be able to walk through my neighborhood and see my neighbors, be able to shake hands with them, see them smile and laugh, because now then we know that we're going to have a decent Thanksgiving, and finally, finally, after three years, we're going to have a decent Christmas. Because this was a local hire job. There's four hundred of us out there on Alpine Job, and three hundred and twenty of us came out of here, out of the Antelope Valley. They wanted to bring in people from Arizona. The contractor did, but no. You people said, no, you won't do that. You're local hire. And thank you very much because that's the way I got a job. Thank you very much. And in favor of this, I hope that I can continue to be employed in Antelope Valley doing solar work.
That was good.
That's beautiful.
Mitch, did you see that?
No.
Okay. That was really good. Sean Davison. Now, that is a tough act to follow, Sean.
I know.
That's why he brought his baby with him.
Yeah, I'd bring the baby down.
You have to show off your baby.
Thank you. My name is Sean Davison. I'm thirty-one years old. I was hired locally here through the EDD office. I'm an apprentice now. I have five years worth of school to do. After the end of five years, I'll be electrician, and I just want to say I'm in favor of this project. Before this project, I didn't have a job. But now I'm proud to say I'm an apprentice for IBW, and I thank you guys.
Thank you. So when does it hit the grid? Mr. Garrett?
Two thousand thirteen.
Two thousand eighteen?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Power on November the eleventh. November the eleventh, I'm hearing the first break on, we're getting power from the town.
You know, you've got to bring him into the front office. He was better than-- Wow. Okay. I think that, let's close the public hearing. Any discussion? All right. Can we hear it from Mr. Garrett about the local hiring?
So thus far, we've reached out to a number of organizations, but one being the IBW since they have so much experience in the region. They're already putting people on projects and pulling people from the Antelope Valley, as you can see here. So in addition to that, we're going to continue to work with Araxi, who's part of the city of Lancaster, that's doing the recruitment for these projects. We work with our contractors in tandem to make sure that we bring local in. That's been one thing that we've been preaching from the beginning. I think you can see that we're reaching out to the local small businesses as well, so we'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Virginia, you were probably late, but come on down. Good?
One other one that we need.
Okay, fine. Let's get it all out.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's right. Thank you.
You know, you really don't have to do that. Can we lower it all the way down and she can move into it? And then, I'm just thinking--
Project?
No, I just don't want you to have to bend over and, you know. Does that work?
As far as it goes. Heels down, heels down. All right. Can you hear me well now? Thank you.
Yeah, you're good.
Am I good?
You're totally good.
All right, thank you very much. I just wanted to reiterate that no one's opposed to solar jobs. Everybody, my friends, my neighbors, are all out there working on First Solar right now, and they're working out at Alpine, and they were all unemployed, and they were really glad to be out there, like he says, working ten hours a day, coming home covered with dust, coming home with who knows what's in the soil, which is probably why the workers' union is a little concerned about the environment, the environmental effects of what will happen to people. Like, we didn't know what was going to happen to the first responders when they rushed into the burning buildings, and now because they breathed all the asbestos and nobody told them about it, they're all suffering from that. It's just that we would like an environmental impact report done, which definitely says, this is what you are losing, or this is what the problems are, and we find this problem, and you work a little hard to mitigate them, because these are going to be in for, which is, if it's thirty years, that is like forever in the city of Lancaster. And that's a long-term thing. Do we want people driving out to the Poppy Reserve to see nothing but thousands of acres of black reflected? Is that, is that what the, what we really want? Not that, I mean, could we somehow form a company to make solar panels here, to put them on the houses that Lancaster themselves are building, tearing down and building, that don't have solar on them? To work and give, I mean, these companies all come in because they get some kind of federal stimulus to come in here and build, which is why they come. Could we give some kind of a stimulus somehow to parking lot owners or whatever, and to really be a solar capital, not to be a solar sprawl capital, to, you know, to have a different type of, not everybody wants to live in the country, but not everybody wants to live in the city also. Some people value that out there, and when that's all that's left in LA County, I would think that you would do everything you could to make sure that whatever you're doing was right, which is the only reason we're asking for an environmental impact report. The mitigated negative deck relied on the CDND, which we stated was just a bunch of opinions of California Fish and Games, says we don't believe that you should even rely on that, because it's just a lot of, if nothing, you don't even have to be scientifically based to send things into that. They did a quick job because Silverado wanted something to go in really quickly, so they were asked, please get this done really quickly. We feel that, again, we're not against solar. Our friends are out there, it's not that they love working out there, like he said, and the jobs when they're gone, eventually you're going to be faced with the very same thing. What are we going to do for employment? Now do I move to Blythe? Now do I move to Hare? And I'd just like to see better planning. That's all we want. That's why we look at the environmental impact report, not to not do it, just to take a really close look and say, what are we getting into? So that we, down the road, can be proud of whatever we're done, and not say, how did we end up in this mess? If there is a mess that we'll result from it, then that's what we don't know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert--
Last name's Guy.
I can't read it. Is that an R and an N? So it's Kirkies, right? Kirkies. Okay. Thanks.
Mayor and council members, I'm an environmentalist, so I'm for solar. I'm not against it. I live in Antelope Acres. I live very close to this, this site that Silverado wants to do. They're taking out, we have about six in the whole area alfalfa farms. There isn't any other farming going on. That's where open space was for a long time. And so this is an alfalfa farm here that they're going to take out. The alfalfa farm is going to eliminate a lot of wildlife there. I live very close. I go riding on a mountain bike around the area with my camera around my neck, and I go taking pictures. And I've seen a lot of stuff grow that's out there in that area. Swainson's hawks, I got pictures, I gave it in for this project. Swainson's hawks, we have a lot of birds that come through the area that migrate. They need trees. We'd like to see some trees instead of solar panels. Farujanis hawk, very near this site that I got a picture of. Northern harrier hawk, they never did catch any of these in their survey. So I've seen these things in the survey, I've taken pictures of them, I've submitted it, and I'd like to see a better survey done. I don't think that this is a good enough survey. And on the thing about local jobs, tomorrow I have an appointment. I'm going out to First Solar. I'm going to be checking their hydro seeding to see if it's working. They're going to show it to me. I'm very happy to finally get there. But First Solar had meetings with the public, and I've gone to every one of those meetings. And for a long time, First Solar was bringing in people from out of the state to work. And it was people like myself and other people in the area that raised concerns about local hires. It was people who live in the area that wanted local hires because we have people in the area that don't have work. So that's part of the problem, and that's, that's part of what we did there. But we really feel like an EIR should be done, and we don't understand why the county is requiring Silverado and every other project to have an EIR. They started out with MNDs, and they changed their mind after. They went through a few of them because they had a lot of problems. They've had a lot of problems with First Solar. I've seen stacks of reports on all the problems they've had. So, you know, the loss of a farm in Sun Power that's got forty-four hundred acres over in part of Antelope Acres, part of Kern County, is, is taking out a huge farm. And there's only a few alfalfa farms left, so they're going to be gone. And Silverado's been trying to get another alfalfa farm right across the street from the school. And they already have an approval for a solar facility right next to the school. So they'll be on the other side, they'll be behind them. We're concerned about Del Sur School and the problems for Del Sur School and the environment they'll be in. So we really would like to have EIRs on all these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to close the public hearing. Again, any discussion? Is there a motion?
If I may, before we motion, Mr. McKean, can we see if, what the decision was, if I need to recuse myself?
No, same as, same as on the last issue. The test is whether or not the decision will have a material financial effect on your financial interests, and based on the facts that we discussed, I don't believe that there is any financial interest involved.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 1265, introduce Ordinance Number 983, and adopt Resolution Number 1266.
Second?
Second.
Vote. It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. I guess we can just go through it without a break. Council reports? Mr. Chris and Mr. Van.
The AVTA doing a great job. We just won some national awards for small transit agencies. It's the first time the AVTA has done so. It's moved in a different direction for the last two years. We're buying new buses. We hope to be looking to buy a couple new electric buses if things go right. We're going down to a location in Los Angeles to look at some electric buses. So if things go right, we'll be looking at some electric buses.
So we should have electric fire trucks.
He's looking far away.
We're all looking at you.
Mr. Chris, you also forgot to mention that we had a audit, and everything is much better than where it was a little over a year ago.
So, okay, I assume those are BYD buses?
They have probably the best product on the market. Did you hear that, Greg? BYD buses in Lancaster. It's a first.
So what about air quality management?
You should probably read about it in the Valley Press.
Well, I'm a little concerned, and I'm serious about this. So did the, so did Palmdale make the payment?
Not yet, not at this point. For those of everybody that, the Palmdale Power Plant has a permit fee. That permit fee is a hundred and twelve thousand dollars that the city of Palmdale has agreed to pay. The city of Palmdale is looking, like we said that they would, to sell it to a private contractor, and once they sell that, then they're going to, or they're wishing to pay back the ABA QMD for its permit fees at that time.
I'm wondering, so what about all this about Palmdale was going to own it and lower the power rates for the citizens of Palmdale? Was that just a scam? Or was there any reason to believe they were ever going to do that?
Well, I can't comment on what it is. It's just that they're not doing what they said they were going to do. I can only comment on the lack of payment from the power plant, and we did predict that they would not have it locally. So it's going to be outside for us, and they're going to do this for thirty-five jobs.
Mr. Bozignin, if they can't make a hundred thousand dollar payment on a thirty-four million dollar project that they've already invested that much money in, are we in danger of seeing Palmdale default on other obligations? And what is the impact on Lancaster if that occurs? The reason I'm asking is if they have to, if they have to cut back on sheriff services, if they have to, I mean, they're too close to us for it not to have a significant impact, and what are we doing to, to plan for that? Or at least analyze whether or not it's a distinct possibility?
I personally have not analyzed that beyond keeping communications open with the city manager and following what goes on. I agree with your assessment that, in my opinion, both cities need to be strong because for public safety is a perfect example. Both cities have to be strong on public safety and invest in public safety, or we're all worse off. I could look at it more, but just the initial is making sure that I have a decent relationship with the city manager of Palmdale.
Have we looked at their reserves, their sufficient reserves? I mean, what I don't want to do is be sitting up here after a crisis occurs and us not having a plan in place, because whatever happens there is going to have a significant impact on us. And this is a warning bell, and it's ringing incredibly loud in my head right now. When, when a city is unable to make a hundred thousand dollar payment on a project of that magnitude, that is a warning sign. I want to know. I want to know, one, is it, is there a problem over the horizon? If the worst happens, what are we going to do to be prepared for that? And I'd like answers to that as soon as possible. All right? Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Chris?
We're looking at obtaining some new events at the fairgrounds. So we're working with Mr. Bozignin on that. So we're bringing them from Ridgecrest to the fairgrounds, so I think everything's looking good for us.
Good. Thank you. Anything else? Good. Moving on. So what do you guys think about changing the meeting time?
Starting in December?
What do you care? What are your thoughts?
My thoughts are, it works now. I think it's a strain on staff to change the time. I think that staff works a long day. You spoke about it earlier. They're here early, they're asked to stay late, they've been here since eight o'clock, they've been here for twelve hours now. That's a long day for anybody. So if we had changed it an hour, they'd be here for thirteen hours. If, if there's a need, if somebody needs to change it for a reason, but that's my thoughts. I just think that, you know, our job is to make it not only accessible to the public, but efficient government. And there's some employees here that are paid by the hour, there's some here that are paid differently. So I just think it's more effective and more efficient to keep it at five o'clock, if possible.
So you think twelve hours is a long day?
Yeah, I've been--
I've been-- Okay. All right. Anybody else? All right, we'll take a look. It's not on the agenda, but we have, whenever you've got council comments or directions--
CA two.
Okay. City manager.
Just one announcement, sir. While Periclee High School is not Antelope Valley with a hundred-year history, Periclee does have fifty years this year, and this weekend they will be--
It's not on the agenda, but we had... Whenever you have a council comments or directions...
CA2.
Okay. City manager?
Just one announcement, sir. While Periclee High School is not in Antelope Valley with a 100-year history, Periclee does have 50 years this year. And this weekend, they will be celebrating at their homecoming game, honoring class and folks from the past. And I think it's... We congratulate Periclee High School.
On what?
Graduating stellar citizens each and every year.
Oh, for 50 years.
For 50 years of participating in the community and being a leader in the community.
Weren't they a bunch of rich kids when we were kids?
They were.
That's useful, too.
They were.
I could really get in trouble.
Well, you know, being elopes myself, but our daughter attending Periclee, I have been...
Like I said, a rich kid.
Oh, she works for her money. She's been very involved with Periclee, preparing for the game and celebrating the 50th anniversary. And they're really proud. And we're adding a lot of exciting things and a lot of historical moments for the community to appreciate and enjoy. And it truly is proud to be able to say that they're celebrating 50 years. And they have made a big difference with so many rich or not rich children.
Listen, Tiffany's top's in my books.
Thank you.
Whatever she wants is fine with me. Okay. City clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out completely and as clearly as possible so that if the city council, city manager, or city staff needs to get in touch with you, they will have your information. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is announced. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins. The yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining. And the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting, and we do appreciate your cooperation. State law does prohibit the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda. And your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Viana Friss?
Hope to be real fast. Thank you for letting me speak, everyone. I am here to warn the Antelope Valley citizens of the fraudulent predatory company of Checkered Flag Plumbing Company, contractor's license 949067. They're predatory on single senior women. They advertise $29 to clear your sewer line. They came on the property and gave me an estimate of $3,800 to clear the line. I said no to that. They stayed there for three hours, explaining that the lines are eight feet down. You have to dismantle the land. And three hours of explanation. I refused to pay that. And they said, "Well, we'll try to the lines again." And they snaked the lines again. And miracle, the lines are cleared. And they asked for $99. And I paid that, and they were gone in 10 minutes. I'd like to warn the Antelope Valley people of this fraudulent company. I've been scared to death. This happened just five hours ago, and I'm just so scared to death. What if I would have believed these five white men here with the Checkered Flag Plumbing Company? I'm just here to try to save senior women that are taken advantage of with these corrupt companies.
Mr. Friss, was this in Lancaster?
Yes.
I want somebody to look at that.
Yeah, we'll look at it first thing in the morning. And there are contract boards and licenses and stuff that we can look at.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you. I care about the valley here.
Thank you.
We're all doing a good job.
Did Darlene leave?
Yes.
Okay. That's it. Any comments?
Yes, if I could. I had talked to the mayor about this. I wanted, on the next agenda, a program initiated. It's something simple that I thought was fascinating. Jamie and I were looking at it. We've always been big on literacy and teaching our kids to read from the time they couldn't even walk. And there's a program out there that is called, in different cities, either One Book One City, Lancaster Reads, or it could be the Mayor's Book Club, and where the city council or the mayor picks a book every quarter and puts it on the website and says, "Hey, that's the book for the city of Lancaster to read together." And you can have volunteers come to the library or the city hall as a... Like one of the English professors come and talk about it. We can put it up on the website. This is the book right here. You know, we have a blog aspect of our website. And people can use blog, make a subject matter on that and blog about the book. And so it's something just to get everybody involved in reading. I know the mayor doesn't read very much, so it might get... And it's only teasing because he reads a lot. And, you know, that would be great. I think it's a good plan to get everybody excited and bring us all together and just promote literacy. And it doesn't cost anything.
If it was my reading list, they'd fall over dead with boredom. But I love the idea. I think we should work on that. Let's assign somebody to it, you know, within 10 days. And let's make it a project, okay?
Yeah, we've already started to research, and we'll have it on the next agenda as a report.
Okay. Great. Great. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Any comments before we close?
Someone going to talk to us, the citizens, in regards to the boulevard? The boulevard?
Yes. This Saturday is the boulevard, which we had 30-some thousand people last year. We have exciting acts. We have candy for the kids. As Rhonda said in the press conference, if you plan on bringing your children for the candy, it's while it lasts. So you should get there with the young ones at 5:00. And as Rhonda also said, the scare factor goes up as each hour comes. So we have age-appropriate for the kids, early and late. And we have a haunted house that's kids-appropriate at Dance Studio 81. It's a great community event, so we hope everyone's out there. Safe, family, and free.
Thank you. Do we have a closed session? God is good. Do one for fun. Okay. We are adjourned until Tuesday, November 13, 2012, at 5:00 p.m., in deference to Mr. Chris. Carol, I'm coming home.
And I'm going to close and adjourn the housing authority until Tuesday, November 13, at 5:00 p.m. And Carol, he's coming home.
And maybe I can have something more to eat than Sandra's almonds, but I appreciate the almonds.
Anytime. Healthy eating.
It's a good thing you didn't say nuts.
[laughing]